We're in the library, of course.
As chairman of planning and zoning, you can imagine my primary concern is this recent notification about eminent domain, the half-mile around train station and bus station. And I want to know what has driven the governor to start to interfere in towns and cities' planning and zoning aspects? And what are all of you going to do about this?
Do you want the political answer or the behind-the-scenes answer?
Oh, and also, how long has this discussion been going on?
A short, short time. It is gubernatorial proposal. Some think it may have something to do with the Stanford train station. The Stanford train station has a big parking facility. It's used by a lot of folks. And during Joeyrell's tenure, she wanted $35 million to put a plan in action to have it be renovated, fixed, replaced. It had served its useful life, but desperately needed repairing. So she wanted to do that. It was stalled until the new administration came in. There are reasons for that that some of us might think about. It's not something I wanted necessarily to talk publicly, but needless to say, there was a no-bid $500 million contract given during the new administration to a developer that has decided to use it for retail purposes and relegating all of the commuters that normally park there to a facility a quarter of a mile away. People aren't happy about it. The commuter council had hearings. You know, everybody's -- I talked against it. A lot of people talked against it. However, it just didn't -- it seemed to fall on deaf ears. As a result, this was moving along, but planning and zoning of Stanford said, "This doesn't feel right to us. This not suit our public and our commuters." So they have been putting some roadblocks and changes to that particular application. You would appreciate that as planning and zoning. Planning and zoning is one of the most important functions of your town government. Let me tell you. They put in ours, but they really have the -- the character and complexion of community is really under their auspices. So some of us feel, and that this may be a reaction, to stalling what's something the administration really wants to occur. And as a result, this draconian proposal of basically taking a committee of about 14 people that the governor chooses to be on this committee to control these projects should they take land a half a mile radius around any train station or bus station where there's no local input by planning and zoning. Oh, and the mayors, or you'll appreciate this, Matt, the mayors and the first electmen can advise and give their impression, but they have no voting say. And I think you probably want to say something about it as well. As you can see, as the news started to get out, everybody's implying, and there are many planning zoning that are doing resolutions that are saying, "This is not appropriate. We need to have some input." And by the way, there are residences around that as well, not just businesses, but people live through them, pick them, rent them.
My understanding is, they're backpedaling right now.
They should.
And there's been a huge outcry. They're backpedaling a little bit. It's being rewritten, so it's not out of the woods yet. But because of people like you who stand up and make noise.
Make noise.
It is happening.
I think the first-elect one, like you said.
Two things. Number one, on the issue that you're talking about, did you see the letter from OPM today?
No.
Okay.
Tell us.
Jean-Carlo Casa, under Secretary of OPM, has already transmitted to the mayors and first-electmen nine changes to that proposed bill. One of them is that the eminent domain section is gone. First-electment and mayors having vote, and then they're going to be given a vote on the committee, and then the chair of the regional transportation authority will be an ex officio without a vote.
But you have one vote on a committee of 14?
Oh, no, I know, I know. I'm just -- I'll send you my copy of that. In fact, if I was at the -- I should have brought it with me so I could give it.
This should be a public outcry throughout every town, city. I don't care who you are, you shouldn't have control. You lose enough with 8-30G, which is your affordable housing statute, right? You know that you don't have control over where you situate your affordable housing. This goes far beyond anything imaginable there. And so planning and zoning, town officials, there should be a total state of Connecticut outcry about this. I'm very concerned, as everyone else is.
I haven't heard a thing going on with it right now. I think part of the reason is there are so many controversial things going on. It's one of those years where it's like, "Don't look at the budget. Don't look at the budget. Let's talk about tolls. Don't look at the budget. Let's talk about assisted suicide." And I haven't heard at all what they're doing with the car tax. I know it was one of the Speaker's agenda items that they wanted to do that.
Well, okay, so just to throw it out so you can be aware of it, what I've heard, what I've read so far is the proposal would -- well, let me back up. Right now, towns collect vehicle tax just like all other personal property. And the proposal is that the state would collect that tax on behalf of the town.
We're very good with politics.
It is appropriated to the proper places.
Oh, yes. It gets better.
It goes into the general fund.
There would be a revenue share that comes back to the town, but a part of it would go into a regional fund for development of some kind. And that's as far as I know. So I was hoping that you'd --
Well, that scares it considering that they're proposing eliminating the CIA or doing a similar thing with the Community Engagement Act. So now it's taking money again from the towns and then putting it up to government.
It would also have a flat mill rate across the entire state. So that the towns that have higher rates would feel a big blow on character, would be a head and a hat.
Well, today we met with a neuro hospital in Danbury Hospital. Now, they're combined now. And they -- this is perfect because, see how it works? They did the same thing with the hospital tax. They taxed it higher, and then they were going to take it and reapportion it amongst the hospitals. Well, guess who gets the shortfall of that? It's kind of like your ECS formula, right? For education dollars, it's re-appropriated, but typically not in the places where the money, the general amount of it, comes from. And that's the worry about that particular car tax. By the way, it's a tax that very few states put on your automobile. It's paying for keeping it on your driveway, after you pay your sales tax and others. And it's one of those, you know, very uncompetitive taxes that most states only -- I think two other states even have it. People are scratching their heads when they come here and think of our young people, that extra $200 a year or three.
I'd like to elaborate on that. And this is the sole reason why I came out tonight was the fact that our community and basically all of Connecticut has been inundated with people moving over from other states basically saying, "Pounds in, I'm not paying property tax on my vehicle, and you guys can pay property tax. Dan can attest."
We've talked about this a lot.
A lot. It is infuriating to me that when I drive around Bethel, every other car I see in somebody's driveway is registered in New York. It's totally unfair, and you guys need to do something about it. You need to change the residency laws. You need to hammer these people. These people come into our community, they don't want to pay property tax over in Westchester. They come in and they're driving, you know, $40,000, $50,000 cars, and yet they come in and they're adamant about changing their plates over. It's a huge expense. It's not just property tax. It's all the DMV fees, and there's this huge shortage of money. Or you wonder why everybody in the state of Connecticut goes, "Where's the money?" Well, your money's driving around, folks. And everybody who lives in this town or has a car registered in the state of Connecticut should be outraged that this is going on. The Connecticut Department of Motor Vehicles Commissioner, I have spoken to her on the phone, and she told me flat out, "What do you want me to do about it? This is the leader of the Commissioner, you know, the DMV for our state. So every year that your taxes go up on your vehicles, then you go to register a vehicle, and there's more fees and everything else. It's all to balance this nonsense out. It's absolutely unacceptable, and something needs to change. The residency laws need to be changed, and there needs to be tougher enforcement. It's unacceptable."
Dealers will tell you that four out of five cars that he sells are being registered in a different state. Okay? Now, there's some of us that inherently absolutely think that that tax should be eliminated. It should not even be existent. Because honestly, the money's there. We've looked at, and some of us on the other side of the aisle, to find $400 million of extra money, we can have in the transportation fund right now. And the thing is, they don't want to listen to those different alternatives. They always go to another tax. And that is a very uncompetitive tax. So instead of forcing everyone to say, "We're going to penalize you. We're going to force you to buy your car elsewhere and register it elsewhere," which is pretty draconian, very rarely is that done even from all sides of the aisle in treating that differently. You can't -- because you buy a house in another state, you're still going to pay Connecticut taxes for that house in another state. It just doesn't fly. I think more importantly, deal with the fact that that is a very uncompetitive task when we tax pensions. I'm sorry for talking so much, but I'm going to leave, and they're going to talk the whole rest of the time. But quite frankly, the tax on pensions when a person retires, that's another really bad tax that keeps people from staying and quickly moving to places that don't have it, like the Carolinas and, quite frankly, Texas, and even New Hampshire. New Hampshire. I guess Montana, Wyoming are two great states with seniors as well. It's a little bit cold up there. But this is driving patterns of people where they live, quite frankly.
The point is, is that people are moving into our state, and they're not doing what we all do when we buy a vehicle.
You're talking about an enforcement issue.
It's the sales tax when you go and you buy a vehicle. It's the emissions fees. It's the DMV fees. It's the registration fees.
It certainly can tell you stories about how aggressively people come after me when I just simply do my job and send these tax, these people notices and bills. I agree with you 100%. You get to a point where certainly the time and the energy to go after it and the money spent to go after these vehicles far exceeds the income that comes from them. We certainly tax anyone that we find. We carry cameras with us while we're out doing field work. We have pictures of vehicles with their registrations out of state. We notify homeowners all the time. However, I have three people in the office. I can't be everywhere every day. And as we've spoken, and I know that you actively tried to change this, I can't even go to our local police department and give them a motor vehicle registration and ask them who the owner is because there's a law in the books that doesn't allow them to do that. So it really is a vicious cycle sometimes. I'm sorry, I came in a little bit late, and I think you were talking about the car tax bill when I came in, and that's the bill I'd really like to discuss with you today. I think from my perspective and the work that I do and what I see happening around the state, the bill that's before you this session is one in which the assessing and collecting of the motor vehicle tax will be done on the state level. That's not a good thing for Bethel, and I don't believe it's a good thing for any town in this state. I went through today and looked at some of the mandates that we currently have in which the funding is being pulled back. One of those programs is the machinery exemption for manufacturing corporations. I looked at it today, and we're receiving a little less than about $219,000 in reimbursement for that program. That is currently costing the town of Bethel about $700,000. And the reason why the difference is so great is because that program was funded at 2010 levels. It will not increase past that. Plus, it has the same line in that statute that is in this one that states, "If not enough money is collected to fund the full amount of the exemption, it will be prorated." So that alone will tell you that whatever is collected, Bethel is certainly not going to get back what had gotten back had we collected it ourselves. Now, I know there'll be people out there that will tell you it reduces staff in those offices. And it does. There's no question about that. But I believe the cost to Bethel is far less to staff those offices, collect that money, and make sure that everything that belongs to Bethel stays in Bethel than would be -- the reimbursement would be certainly less than what it's costing us. There wouldn't be a saving. So I'm not really sure where I stand. I don't care if you come up with a statewide mill rate. I don't really care if you eliminate them entirely. Whatever it is that you decide to do, my real push for you is to please let Bethel assess and collect those taxes. Let that money that's supposed to be in Bethel stay in Bethel. Because history has told us over and over and over again that we lose the funding and our reimbursement back grows less and less and less every single year.
This is going to be one of those things the governor puts in his budget, and he's going to look at some of that money and what he could take from it, and it's going to pad the budget numbers. That's exactly how it works.
Quickly, what I said before, talking about the Community Development Act, I could see that happening with that if we taxed the cars at the state level. Because what we -- all the recording fees that you pay at Town Hall goes to the state. And previously, the state would then use it to invest back into the local community. And what you're seeing now in the governor's current budget proposal is removing that. And now it's supposed to be temporary, like many things that the state does.
It was definitely temporary.
Which I don't believe is obviously is not going to be temporary. It's probably going to be permanent for quite a while. And I could see that same exact thing happening for vehicle tax.
But you didn't make the look at the votes. You used to tax votes in the town, and now we can't tax votes, which is fine, but we're supposed to get reimbursement for that loss. And actually, I mean, that's never happened.
And a lot of it is prevailing -- what I seem to -- the prevailing theme here, and correct me if I'm wrong, seems to be autonomy with the towns and the municipalities. A lot of people are frustrated that the state seems to be getting involved too much in municipal issues. And then now we're also saying, "Hey, by the way, give us all your money too, and then we'll figure out how to spend that as well." So we need to find a way to make our towns more autonomous, and I think all three of us agree on that issue.
Gentlemen, do you mind? I have about five or six more minutes. Is there anything you want to ask me before I go?
We'll step out early for --
No, no, no. It's okay. I apologize. Yes, Rich?
Well, I'm not going to talk about taxes because I think we've covered it pretty much, but something of a personal issue here is that my wife works at an assisted living in Danbury, and she -- I'm speaking on behalf of her because she's working. And the senior safety zones. And one of the things that she was concerned about is that about the recommendation of the legislature to consider prohibiting registered sex offenders from entering senior centers, you know, elderly housing, and of course, assisted living is under that. And she wanted to know, "How do we know that this person is a sex offender?" Instead of going, "She doesn't have the time to go to this Connecticut. I don't think there's anything on their car, on their license plate, or on their license, or they don't have a tag around their neck saying that they're a sex offender. So how do we know that to let a person in that's a sex offender or not unless they have some sort of ID that says, 'Hey, I'm a sex offender'?"
But there is a state registry. You can actually go on certain sites that will actually have like pin marks about where next to you or closest to you where they're located.
Yeah, she does that for a radius of 25 miles. But when you -- it's very hectic at these places. People getting sick, dropping metal on the floor, meals and all that stuff. And it says under -- and how do we know that what the limited circumstances are other than visiting a relative or voting in elections? Well, assisted livings don't really have elections there, but -- and I was just wondering, how do we enforce the fact other than going to the Connecticut registry that this person is a sex offender? Especially on the upper floors, there are, I'd say, mentally incompetent people. So it seems like it's going to be unenforceable at a quick level.
No question, Rich. I think it is one of the biggest tragedies that we have in our society, where children and elderly people that can't or are very vulnerable become targets for those bad actors. No question about it. I think beyond being able to register them and have a public registry, which was a big -- and it was very controversial in fact, you know, because it's very difficult now to situate them even once they get out of jail and have they done their time. And there's been lots of controversies about a certain community where they wanted to put like halfway houses or places where they could have a place to live, really. So it's a very, very difficult and intractable process. All I can tell you is that these registries, public registers, were very controversial to begin with. I think if you go beyond that, it will be very difficult. But I think that targeting our nursing homes and our most vulnerable population for a lot of different things is very appropriate, and it has a lot of support in fact. But as far as going beyond that, Rich, I don't know where that piece of legislation is at the moment, and we'll see how it goes by the end of the session.
Rich, I have a personal thing too. Juvenile sentencing to life without parole. Well, in my citizen volunteer career here in the town, I've dealt with a lot of juveniles, you know, all kinds and everything, with the teen center and on the youth commission. So I would like for my legislators to think very, very hard and very, very, I guess, emotionally and also maybe as far at cost about sentencing somebody under 18. You know, with murder, well, that's another thing. But I don't see what's the benefit of, on some crimes, to sentence a 16-year-old, a 14-year-old, or whatever, to a life without parole. I mean, I find out that kids under 18 are kind of immature, and it goes across both genders. So I want you to think long and hard, and maybe, you know, I don't know whether it's a religious issue or not, but, you know, what does that say? We're going to house all these kids and our taxes and everything?
Well, there is some support. And I know that Steve and Dan will probably speak more to this as well. There is some support, and there already has been changes in our laws in the last couple of years with regards to sentencing those under 18 and making sure that they're in the juvenile court system versus the adult court system. So there's been some support on that. But the bill that's before it, some of the -- the second chance bill has a few problems.
Fifth chance.
Pardon? Yes. Yes, exactly. This second chance society or the proposal that was put on the table has some serious flaws. One of them is that it's not a second chance. There are chances that go to infinity. In other words, you can commit the same crime. Now, we're talking hopefully about nonviolent, although some of the -- some of part of that bill also has to do with the possession of drugs up to the point of heroin and crack cocaine, and it's for any amount that could be in your possession. That's another flaw. So a person that has a car full of it is not in possession for your own purpose. It might be perceived as it's an intent to sell. So the intent to sell part is still going to be a bigger crime, but the other puts everyone in a misdemeanor situation. So there's got to be some balance. And unfortunately, through everything but the kitchen sink in this bill, which is not a good thing, to separate your issue is very supportable, certainly by many of us with regards. But there's other aspects to this bill that you should take a very close look at.
Rich, I have a personal thing too. Juvenile sentencing to life without parole. Well, in my citizen volunteer career here in the town, I've dealt with a lot of juveniles, you know, all times and everything, with the teen center and on the youth commission. So I would like for my legislators to think very, very hard and very, very, I guess, emotionally and also maybe as far at cost about sentencing somebody under 18. You know, with murder, well, that's another thing. But I don't see what's the benefit of, on some crimes, to sentence a 16-year-old, a 14-year-old, or whatever, to a life without parole. I mean, I find out that kids under 18 are kind of immature, and it goes across both genders. So I want you to think long and hard, and maybe, you know, I don't know whether it's a religious issue or not, but, you know, what does that say? We're going to house all these kids and our taxes and everything?
Well, there is some support. And I know that Steve and Dan will probably speak more to this as well. There is some support, and there already has been changes in our laws in the last couple of years with regards to sentencing those under 18 and making sure that they're in the juvenile court system versus the adult court system. So there's been some support on that. But the bill that's before it, some of the -- the second chance bill has a few problems.
Fifth chance.
Pardon? Yes. Yes, exactly. This second chance society or the proposal that was put on the table has some serious flaws. One of them is that it's not a second chance. There are chances that go to infinity. In other words, you can commit the same crime. Now, we're talking hopefully about nonviolent, although some of the -- some of part of that bill also has to do with the possession of drugs up to the point of heroin and crack cocaine, and it's for any amount that could be in your possession. That's another flaw. So a person that has a car full of it is not in possession for your own purpose. It might be perceived as it's an intent to sell. So the intent to sell part is still going to be a bigger crime, but the other puts everyone in a misdemeanor situation. So there's got to be some balance. And unfortunately, through everything but the kitchen sink in this bill, which is not a good thing, to separate your issue is very supportable, certainly by many of us with regards. But there's other aspects to this bill that you should take a very close look at.
There's a range of sex offenses from somebody that may have gotten a picture on their computer 40 years ago to someone who's truly a violent sex offender. Where does an elderly, senior registered sex offender go to live if not in an elderly facility?
That's an excellent question. You're talking to someone that is quite a bit older. You know, it's an interesting point. You know, you talk about -- I asked someone that was at a political meeting many years ago, who was one of the state's foremost psychiatrists that worked in our maximum-security prison. And it was actually a meeting with Henry Kissinger, and he was in our district. It was really quite -- and when he told me what this one did, very famous guy, I said, "Well, can I pick your brain for a moment?" I said, "We really have trouble with regards to people that, first of all, are sex offenders, and the recidivism is very high." I said, "Now, you have been working with this population as a foremost psychiatrist. Tell me, can you cure it? Can you?" And he says, "No." He says, "But guess what does cure it?" And I said, "What?" He says, "Age." Actually, age. And over a certain age, something happens with the biology of the individual. And they're, you know -- well, women too. I have to -- let's be honest here, we're all friends and family, right? That happens to all of us as we age. And that kind of changes the behavior pattern even more so than the intense psychiatric intervention that they do talk with. And I don't know if medication is a part of that or not, but it is a serious concern. You and I both had elderly parents, you and a parent in a nursing home. I was always, always under the fear that something would happen, and you couldn't be there 24/7, and they would -- first of all, they're subject to having things taken from them, and they forgetful, and to the point where even their wedding rings were at risk, and it was devastating to me. So you bring up a very good point. The concern about the safety of elderly, it is really a very high priority.
More specifically though, someone who may have been convicted as a sex offender for a nonviolent offense, they had a bad picture of a kid 40 years earlier, and they need to go to a nursing home. This sex offender is a lifetime scarlet letter. Where do they go to live themselves? How do they get placed if no sex offenders are allowed in an elderly facility when they're elderly?
Well, you make a good point that maybe someone should be looking at legislation to see what level of offense you fall under. And there should be a little bit more clarity on that. There's no question about it.
Also, the safety of the staff.
Oh, sure.
Which, you know, it's not necessarily all 100% of the residents. It's the staff that's there. I mean, I'd be horrified if my wife got beat up by somebody in there that she's saying, "You can't come in," and pulls a knife or something. I'd be devastated. So it's also the staff.
Well, I think Joey made a good point regarding Senator's lead.
Yes. Well, I am because I've got another thing and deed to do.
We have to think about how that all works out. As you said, if you have somebody that is a sex offender, we can't castize them in society and just say, "Well, forget about you." We have an obligation to care for everybody, no matter how bad your background may be. So that's something that we're going to have to balance in the legislature, and I'm happy you brought that to our attention. And I think it also hits on a point that Tony discussed, which was second chance society, which, as I said, is really a fifth chance society. Governor Malley had proposed something called the second chance society, which, as Senator Boucher had mentioned, it takes a simple possession charge of drugs, no matter what drug it is. Could be from heroin down to a certain amount of marijuana. And makes it into -- it wasn't originally a felony unless it's into a misdemeanor now, and also puts a certain direction upon sentencing as well. My problem with this is I practice in criminal defense, so I understand the actual applicability of it all. And as Tony said, you have usually about three or four, sometimes five chances before you actually take a conviction on something. So this is really not a second chance society. And what a lot of legislators in our judiciary committee thought was, "Oh, well, you know, someone made a mistake once, let's give them a second chance." No, this is usually the fourth time you've been arrested before you take a conviction. There's programs like Drug Education Program. There's programs like Community Service Labor Program, which you have two shops at. So you can use up to three or four programs before you actually take a conviction. At some point, there has to be consequences for your actions. I'm sorry. That's my belief system. And I've seen, I, growing up, I mean, graduating high school only 10 years ago at this point shows my age. I've seen a lot of friends suffer with substance abuse. One of my best friends, who I went to high school with, I played baseball and football with. with, died only a couple of years ago due to an overdose. We need to start creating laws which deter people from getting involved in substitute use as opposed to incentivize it. So that's my thoughts on the second chance society. Yeah, so if you're under eighteen and sentencing, that actually is a Supreme Court decision, so we don't have much of a say in a legislature regarding, because of Supreme Court decision, a judge can't sentence somebody under the age of eighteen, no matter what they do, to life without parole. So the statute's going to have to change regardless. I just don't know, I think what the current proposal is, is that you have to be able to have a parole hearing by, I think, your eighteenth year in prison. I just, I don't like taking away discretion from judges. I feel that they know more facts about these specific cases, and if they sentence somebody to life without parole, there has to be some factors that we don't know about that are pretty bad. So I don't like taking discretion away from judges. There's a reason why we appoint them, so I don't know if we should go down to eighteen, maybe we raise that a little bit. Nevertheless, it's a Supreme Board decision, and they need to be unconstitutional to sentence anybody under the age of eighteen to life without parole. So that's going to be changed regardless of how we go.
What we do in Hartford, it doesn't make a difference?
Well, it, it makes a difference in what we codify as a statute. So we, it might not be, you know, right now, they're proposing after eighteen years, you have to get a parole hearing. That could be raised possibly to thirty or something, so it depends. That can be moved along. That's not, that's not unconstitutional, but life without parole is unconstitutional, so that is going to be changed.
Steve, you mentioned earlier that one of the themes coming up tonight is to turn autonomy back to the towns, but I would also say that another theme is the rule of few, as you were talking about, the, the commission regarding eminent domain. Well, there's another commission that's at work right now, which is the Sandy Hook Commission, and there's two proposed pieces of legislation that are coming about that disturb me and my husband and my friend here that we wanted to come and talk to you about. So one is HB six-six-four, which is mandating mental health screening for all children in Connecticut, and the other is HB six-eight-nine-one, which would grant school superintendents access to birth records. So we feel that this is just a huge overreach on the part of a few people, and it, where are parental rights?
You bring up a good point, because that's been, that's been a topic lately for everybody with what's been happening with DCF. I don't know if you know, the commissioner had a little bit of a challenge getting reappointed this time around. Parental rights are a big deal. We're seeing it a lot right now with what happened, DCF taking over the kids, basically, for, yeah, they were looking for a second opinion, and no, the hospital basically took them over and imprisoned the kid up in Hartford. The other thing is vaccines. As you know, vaccines are a big thing right now, and there's very little choice that a parent can have of whether to vaccinate the child, and I understand both sides of the issue. And certainly here, again, we've been hearing this for a couple of years now, that they wanted to expand mental health screening in schools. It's, it's interesting, because it's, on one hand, there are folks who, you know, they can diagnose things much earlier, that there are issues with kids that, you know, we don't want to stigmatize them, we don't, we're not about just finding somebody who's crazy. We're about finding autism, we're about finding all kinds of different things. So that's on one side, and the other side is the fact that it could be used for very nefarious purposes. You can have one superintendent, one group in a school, and they can do a lot with that information, and it's a very, very difficult rope. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. It's come up a couple of years now, and, you know, I'd like to see what the bill looks like when it's done.
The, the mental health screening, I understand why, why they're doing it. I'm not saying that I agree with it, but I understand what their, their motive is behind it in regards to addressing the mental health issue at our schools, which obviously has to be addressed in some means. Doesn't mean that it has to be necessarily that regard, that might be overextensive, obviously, but something has to be done regarding that. Again, you know, this, it gets back to the government not really taking a role of assistance, taking a role of big brother, and essentially just telling us what to do as opposed to saying, "What can I do to help?" And that, I believe that does have to be changed. I don't even know, maybe Dan can enlighten me on this, but I don't even know why you'd want the superintendent to see somebody's birth records. I just, I just feel that, that serves, that serves absolutely, in my opinion, I don't know what committee that's before, even if it's gone up to a committee.
See, what's important is there are, there's four thousand bills that start out, four thousand bills. It'll get whittled down by June third to about four hundred. I'm not saying it's going to make it through. And what's interesting is this stuff's coming from left field every day. Like, you know, it was, it was one day, we're up there at Capitol, all of a sudden, "Oh, guess what? We're doing casinos." You know, it's, it's, this stuff comes out of nowhere, so sometimes that's what's great about you guys paying attention to what's going on, because I had not heard about that bill with the superintendents looking for birth records.
That's, that's.
And I don't know, I don't know their intent, I mean, I will, I will look at it, I'll read the testimony, I'll try to figure it out, but the mental health part has been cooking for a while, because we're also, we've also looked at putting more school-based health centers around the state. And believe me, it's one of those things goes back and forth. There are families who aren't adequately screening kids for health issues, and all issues, not only your mental health, but all issues. So that could be something that's really a great resource for people. I don't know yet, I mean, we'll.
Well, it's one thing for the state to have resources that they offer parents, and it's another thing to come, force parents to comply.
Yeah.
We're very, we're very good at telling people what to do, we're not so good at funding it. That's a problem too.
Well, the parents, the parents would have to pay, the parents would have to pay for the mental health.
The parents would have to pay, that's something else out of your pocket too. And then if the parents don't pay for it, then sometimes I could see them pushing the cost upon the schools, which is an additional burden upon our municipalities as well. So there's also a cost factor to that as well.
Over here, oh, sorry, go ahead. You want him?
Yeah, well, I'd just like to say more about this health screening. I, I find it terrifying, the, the whole notion of, okay, if they implement mental health screenings and then your kid, somehow they say, "Oh, there's a problem with your kid." Well, then what happens? And what, what, what do they have the right to do now? And also, I don't know about you, but these, these mental health experts and social work experts, I don't know that they're any better than I am at handling an emotional problem with my kid, and I'm terrified at the thought that they're going to get their hands on my kid. Also, the, I, I didn't, I started reading the, the recommendations of the commission for these, these mental health screenings. I didn't see anything remotely like, "Oh, well, we're going to do a pilot program, and we're going to test it for five years in one district and make sure that we know what we're doing." There was nothing remotely like that. It was no, the proposition was statewide imposition of mental health screenings, and then we get to take your kid and do what, it was not clear, but.
And all children and not just public school children?
I'll guarantee you how that, how that gets started, you know. The, the truth of the way the, the legislature works is there's, you know, there's people up there who have more power and more say than others. That's just the bottom line. You get a bunch of strong personalities there, and it's an institution where people have been there a long time. So next thing you know, they're fighting for that person's bill or what that little group of people want to do versus, you know, really stepping back and saying, "Hey, what's really right?" And I see that every day in the institution of what we say is Hartford. So I would bet my left leg that I'm sure that there's a group of people up there who really, really want this, and this is their thing, and they want it, damn their torpedoes, and they're going to jam it through. That's how the stuff happens up there, and I understand your concern, because there's, there's a fine line there between, you know, like I said, giving somebody resources, but then running their life and all the best intentions of the world, but guess what? They're going to take away your ability to make a decision for your kid, which may be better.
Also, also, the truth about Adam Lanza and, and what he did has nothing to do with what this, what these proposals are about. It's almost as if the Sandy Hook Commission is capitalizing on that tragedy.
We do try to have all these resources for students as they're going through school. Boy, the day they graduate, there's nothing. There's nothing, they're just put out there. And I think that, that was the real tragedy behind this, and we need to make sure that there's a continuum of care for people, because, yes, you were right, everybody knew who he was, I mean, there was a lot of issues for a long time. And, yeah, go ahead.
I have to follow up on this. I taught in Newtown for thirty-eight years, and thirty-eight years, every child by every competent teacher, and I'm saying that most teachers, ninety percent, were competent in observing each child in their classroom, not as a whole, each individual, watching action, reaction. If there was something that was a little bit antisocial, we had counselors. I'm sure Bethel has counselors. I'm sure every single village, town, city in Connecticut has counselors. Now, do the counselors call the parents? Do, have the teachers made a direct observation that this happened, this, not opinion, but actuality? That's what counts, and it's up now to the parents and the counselors at school to come together and put up a plan, an action plan, for this child to go out into the community. You're talking about sex offenders. Okay, it doesn't happen automat, it doesn't happen overnight. All of these, and it's an illness, whether you're a sex offender, if you're completely deranged, like Adam Lanza was. It doesn't just happen, it's an accumulation of experiences, action, reaction, and everybody's observing and saying, "Wow, did you see that?" Well, you've got to act on it.
And it's hard to act on. We have a lot of hurdles.
That's right.
We have stigma of mental illness, we have political correctness, we have parents who don't want to be victims of that because of their kid. You know, and that's the way people look at it, it's very difficult. But you have a point, because teachers know.
That's right.
Teachers know.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, and I see your, your hand raised, but I'll just quickly say that we're, we're lucky in these communities, and, and the district that Dan represents and the district that I represent is very similar in our demographics and who, who we represent, our constituents. We're lucky around here to have a lot of parent involvement with, with the children. Some communities aren't, but the one thing that we need to do, and I don't think this is necessarily a state problem, it may be a municipal problem or a school problem, is there needs to be more parent involvement within the schools regarding those plans for those children, and, and they need, they need more of a say in regards to the direction they want their children going. Seems to be sometimes, from what I hear from these institutions, is that a lot of times I walk into a school and they'll say, "Well, this is what we're going to do for your child." And I say, "Well, wait a minute, did I ever get a chance to tell you what, what I thought was best?" So that needs to be something that needs to be brought about. I don't know if that's a state issue, it might be more of a municipal issue, but.
And, and I'll see, I don't know if he's still in the room, is our board of education chair.
Larry was here, yeah.
Yeah, so he's going to serve as a public speaker. But, but, yeah, he'll, he'll be the first to say too, the state needs to be funding special education.
Right.
Oh, big time.
I mean, we don't fund it, and that's a huge problem. We don't fund it adequately, we're not.
We don't fund any education adequately.
Yeah.
Now, they bring down mandates to our schools and tell them, "Okay, you have to do this, but we're not giving you a penny for it." And of course, our local education worths a lot of money.
And some, some of them are just absolutely superfluous, none, none of them have any substance to it or better than education of the children. There's certain things Dan and I were discussing regarding recording, certain recording, certain ways that clerks in the schools have to record children's grades and reports in state. I mean, these are things that, it's not necessary, it's really not helping any child, and it's a great example of overburdened staff, and, and on top of that, more, more resources that have to be utilized for something that's really not helping the children, that we're not funding at all, so.
Well, I would just say that the question comes down to, who do the kids belong to? The kids belong to the parents, they don't belong to the schools.
And it's a village.
I get it, I get it. I don't know this guy.
So, so what I'm saying is legislation like this says, "Parent, that's not your kid, it belongs, the kid belongs to us."
I know. The state knows better than you.
You've been waiting patiently, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're coming up to you. Okay, so.
Directly related to this is a bill, I believe, that's concerning discipline of students in schools. They're trying to reduce the discipline. I think it's called a school, Stop the School to Prison Track.
Many times what they are doing, in their mind, they are trying to reduce the effect of people of color or, you know, minorities being arrested more, oftentimes they're coming with that theme. One of the best examples is a drug-free school zone. You know, they've tried for a number of years in a row to get rid of the drug-free school zone, and in fact, Tony Reher should be going through the roof right now. But what they're, what they're saying is, they're saying, "Well, in New Haven, everything's a drug-free school zone because they're all so close together, so it ends up not being able to do what it was supposed to do." Like, the law is just not doing anything for them. Yet, yet up here, I would never want to get rid of a drug-free school zone because it makes a lot of sense, and certainly more protective up here, certainly in Redding, and, you know, it's a big deal. But again, they'll push things through with that in mind, and it's going to affect all of us. So I'll be interested in seeing the bill too, but I know that's the mindset of a lot of these bills that come through.
I, I think it's part of the working of, as you said, the quote-unquote experts, of people that say that it's better to discipline children this way as opposed to that way. I don't think, listen, I think we've done a pretty good job of disciplining children for the past hundred years, I, I, and more than that. And so I, I really got a question, what, what an expert has to say regarding, you know, what's, what's the best form of punishment or, or reprimand for a student? It's, again, I'm sure there's a purpose for it, but I think Dan's, Dan's point was, was that the state, the state is very good because, because we're a state of so many people, the state is very good at giving one-size-fits-all programs when, and this gets back to the autonomy of the municipalities, when really, I think the, the towns know better how to educate our children as opposed to the state, because we're dealing with a concentrated group of students, and, and this is probably where our, our towns need to step up and say, "No, this is how we discipline the children, this is how we reprimand them from doing something bad, and it's worked well for however many years, and here's our studies showing that." I'm very, I'm very leery of any program of the state regarding our education of our students at the state level down, down to the municipalities.
I'm sorry, I have a question about Governor Malloy. How was he allowed? No, 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 this concerns all of us, and I love my state of Connecticut, and I'm very happy paying my taxes. I want a first-class state. I want to have lights on the highway, I want to have good roads. I pay a lot of money. We all, let's all multiply how much we pay in taxes, lots of money. What's he doing? He's cutting back programs. Why? There's money, you can't tell me there's not.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll be honest, I mean, there's not, I mean, we, we are.
How could that have disappeared?
It never was there, I mean, we've been hurting for a while, I mean.
Then where did our taxes go?
The truth is, they've been squandering them. I mean, I'm going to be honest, they, they've been squandering taxes for a long time. But let me, let me, let me hit two parts. Who? Who, the legislature and the governor?
Oh, kids, let's make them responsible.
Well, you do at the ballot box, and it's unfortunate that, you know, we've done this for a long time in Connecticut, it's a land and a city happens. We've got, you know, the highest debt per capita, we've got eighty billion or so in unfunded liabilities, we're, we're paying our Visa with our MasterCard. You know, this, this governor goes out and bonds three hundred million dollars, takes a fifty million dollar bond kickback to pay the light bill. So, you know, it's, it's, I mean, it's, Tony, the wheels are off the wagon, it's crazy, but what he's doing now, and what you're hearing about these cuts, it's, it's part of this year's political budget. I mean, I think the, the governor's come out, he's, he's had all these, these programs. Now, the legislature is going to be forced, because of the people, to put all this money in these programs that are, I mean, there are safety nets, but he's going to fight his tooth and nail on, on getting rid of the bus wagon to nowhere. He's going to fight his tooth and nail on some of these other things that we just can't afford, and at the end of the day, the legislature's going to be the one that has to raise taxes, not the governor. And, and that's the political reality, where he's come to us and said, "Hey, you guys got to figure out how to pay for it this year." Same thing with transportation. Sets out a, you know, billions and billions and billions of dollars envisioned for transportation, hasn't said how we're going to pay for it. So, you know, the, the problem is politics.
Well, then let's make everybody responsible by starting at the top. He takes a ten percent cut in his, no, don't laugh at it.
You just gave him the race.
Takes a ten percent cut in his salary, he donates it to the state of Connecticut, and legislatures who do not go and attend their sessions, they have a monetarily financial cut in their pay. They've done nothing, and what are they receiving? You're talking about kids doing wrong things and punishment. We have a governor, an ex-governor in the, in the papers.
But, you know, I got to tell you.
Where's his punishment?
You don't get paid a lot of money to do this. You get twenty-eight thousand dollars a year and you get your mileage to and from the Capitol. You know, try holding a full-time day job when you're trying to do this as well. I mean, it's frankly, it's one of the most difficult things you can do. So, I understand how you feel because you see these people up there making these decisions, which are just like, you know, what? It's just nuts. And, and the only way you can hold people accountable is hold them accountable at the ballot box. And maybe it's gonna be, you know, I don't care Republican, Democrat. You know, you pick your issues and you go for it. If you get involved, you get everybody you know involved. And if it's something you don't like, then you take them out. That's just the way it works, but that's what, that's what has to happen. It has to be the ballot box because, you know, they just voted for a raise.